Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Due to one of our members, our Chair, not being available, by necessity, I need a motion to allow me to be Chair for this meeting only.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. And go ahead. I'm going to basically ask for a vote. Tricia?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And myself, I'll abstain, of course. I usually do for that. Thank you very much. Roll call, Tricia.
Good evening, everyone. We have in our meeting today Mr. Alan Slaven, Mr. Jared Chadwick, Mr. Ron Bessie, Mr. Richard Bowen, our attorney, and Mr. Derek Sullivan, our town administrator, and myself.
Thank you. I think it's my turn for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I can't try to trip me again. Got eleven. Okay. Announcements. Jared?
I have one off the top of my head right now. And of course, I'm already in uniform, but next week starts EMS Week, and it's a week to thank all EMTs, paramedics, all EMS crews. It's a week of appreciation, just like Nurses Week, but if you guys see the ambulances out, feel free to say hi, thank them for their service, and buy them a Coke or something. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, do you have anything?
All right. I think, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I have, I have one thing. It, it's more of a, I guess maybe you could call it an announcement, but something I've been seeing a lot of lately in town and, you know, personally today, seeing a lot of dogs getting loose and running around town. And one of the things that I'm noticing with all of these posts that are coming out on Facebook or seeing things on the streets is that these dogs, you know, one, they're not registered, and two, there's no way to identify who owns the dog. You know, more importantly, you know, knowing where we can, you know, try to contact an owner, get, you know, people are bringing their dog, you're bringing dogs into their houses, into their cars, to try to get them off the street. Today, I had a near close encounter with a, with a pup on Marion Road where it wandered out of the yard, didn't have a tag. Tried to get it, had it momentarily, and then it got spooked, and it ran off into the middle of the road and almost got hit. We were able to locate the owner, but it's really, really important, you know, our pets are, you know, just like our children, but we need to be really, really cognizant and really trying to make our animals known to people when they find them, when they get out. I know accidents happen, things happen, but there's no way for us to help the pup other than trying to, you know, put it out on social medias or things like that. So I would really encourage, I mean, it is required when you have a pup in town that it is registered, but we really need to start getting names on our, our animals so that we can try to help get them back where they need to be and try to make them safe when they do unfortunately escape our yard. So please, 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 if you don't or you haven't, please get your dogs registered and/or at least get a tag on them so they can be identified so we can get them back to their owners.
Thank you, Ron. Tricia, do you have anything for today?
No, I'm good, except for it's, I'm glad to be back and glad to be back on this board.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, first thing I have, the Wareham Garden Club Plant and Yard Sale, Saturday, May twentieth, nine AM to noon, Methodist Meeting House, which is on Main Street, four ninety-five. I'll list the different things going on. They have annuals, baked goods, crafts, dish gardens, hanging plants, herbs, indoor plants, tools, new and used, including garden gadgets, raffle, shrubs, trees, vegetables, Wareham Garden Club QuickBooks, window boxes, perennials, and yard sale items. And the note here is something for everyone. I just got to take a couple of minutes. We've got certain items on the agenda. Basically, item number seven D, seven D, seven E, and seven F. We are not going to do anything with those today, and I'll explain why. We had a letter come in from a resident questioning whether or not the Board of Selectmen had actually discussed and voted for a special meeting, you know, for the town meeting. I went and reviewed the actual meeting on WCTV, and for some reason, on that meeting, we went through item A, B, we skipped C, and then went to D. C was the actual request to have a special town meeting. We didn't do it, therefore, we have no choice but to suspend the town meeting, the special town meeting that's scheduled for June twelfth. We'll have to go through the whole procedure again and decide when we're going to have it between now and Fall Town Meeting. I apologized to everybody. It's our responsibility as the Board of Selectmen to make sure we go through every item on the list. We missed, and it's our fault, and it's as simple as that. But I do appreciate the person reaching out and letting us know there was an issue, because if we had gone ahead and done it, and then someone complained, it would invalidate the whole town meeting. And the other thing we have, we, we've had an accident where a young boy got killed up on Sandwich Road, bicycling the middle of the road and stuff with the kids doing the usual. Massachusetts has a requirement, sixteen and younger, they have to have a helmet on a bicycle. We have young people constantly riding all over town with no helmets. They're sixteen or under. It's especially when they go down Main Street, four or five, and they think it's fun lifting the front wheel, which is called a wheelie, up in the air and running down the middle of a traffic lane, or actually in the middle. If they fall, it's not pleasant what happens when a car runs over you. You know, it, and the reason that I'm so sensitive about this, I was in motor cycles for fifty-some years, maybe a little longer. I crashed quite a few times. And I actually broke a seven hundred and fifty-dollar helmet. I cracked it one time. If I hadn't had that helmet on, I wouldn't be here today. I'm going to ask the police to reach out, and I'm going to reach out to Registry of Motor Vehicles, et cetera, because there is nothing in the mass general law for any enforcement, except to say they have to have it on. In the last two days, I've seen one young man on Main Street, you know, doing the wheelie, looking around as if it was wonderful, and absolutely no helmet on. So another group of four, same thing, and it's just, you know, I'm reaching out to the parents. You just don't want to do this. It, it doesn't work, you know, concrete and asphalt, et cetera, and someone's head, they don't match. I don't care. So I'm asking to please help us out with this. It's really a terrible thing to have to deal with. And with that, let's go on to item number five, Tricia.
Okay, I want, and so we've had two versions of this agenda, and I believe we're looking for a motion to, to appoint Stephen Revad as a Certified Way Masters for the term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. I'll, I'll double check with numbers when I give it to you. I don't, let me make, see. I do not see Mr. Revad here. So we'll go ahead and have a motion. We're all set. Any questions or anything? As far as the request for the appointment? None heard? Okay, Trish?
So I make a motion that we sort of, that we appoint Stephen Revad as a Certified Way Master for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Again, okay, Ron? Yes.
Yes.
Jared? Jared, just raise your hand, because you it's okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Tricia?
Yes.
Myself, yes. I'd like to thank Mr. Revad for stepping up to become the Waits Manager. Item number six is the Onset Beach and Patio Grill, looking for a one-day, you know, license for the event that he has. I think it's on the twenty, I have here the twenty-eighth. I thought it was the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I thought it was the twenty-seventh also. At least that's everything I've been seeing.
Me too.
Give me one second. I'll find out. Oyster Festival, Saturday, May twenty-seventh.
That's what I thought. We'll call this a scrimnas error on our plan on the, on the agenda, because we've had several agenda changes. Bob is Mr. Evangelista.
I, I saw him in the, I saw him in participants. He should be there.
We need to let him in place. Stop by, see him there. I see his hand raised. Frank, you're muted. Still muted. Frank, you need to unmute yourself, because you're going to have to give us information. Bob, can you go through your end and mute him?
No.
Wonderful. Okay. Going to have to put this on hold and try and come back a little bit later during the event here today. Next thing we'll do is on Serp Ed, I believe Maria Jones is doing a presentation. I believe there's several people from Serp Ed here. If they'll raise their hand and unmute themselves, Bob will let them in.
Hello.
Hi, how are you today?
I'm great. Thank you.
Hi, Maria.
Hello. How you doing?
Good. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So my name's Maria Jones. I'm the Public Engagement and Communications Planner for Serp Ed. And my colleague Philip here, and we're just going to present to you a plan, a regional plan that we're currently in the middle of, just to let you know about it. So I'll, I'll give, I'll hand it over to Philip.
Hi, everyone. My name is Philip Hu. I am a Principal Comprehensive Planner at Serp Ed, which is a region, the Regional Planning Agency, and I'm also the Project Manager for this Party Areas Update. Sorry, there was another slide here, but why are we here today? We have kind of two things. One of them is we are a regional planning agency, so we want to make sure that all of our twenty-seven communities are on board with us, and we're not just coming in and saying, hey, you have to do this plan. You want to come in, ask permission to start working with you on this exciting plan. And the second thing is just to introduce this plan and just field any questions you might have about it. So what is a priority area? What is a PDA? What is a PPA? You know, planners love jargon, so let's try to break it down. PDAs or Priority Development Areas are areas for additional growth. They meet a regional need for housing or economic development, and they often have good access to transportation or the potential for access to infrastructure. Priority Protection Areas, on the other hand, are areas that are important to protect. So these include significant natural or cultural resources. So this includes habitats, water resources like aquifers, historic resources, and agriculture. But how do we determine where these PDAs and PPAs go? Well, we empower each of our community with a lot of data. So we use data such as zoning, land use, infrastructure, kind of on the human side of things, and the environmental data like habitats, water resources, and conservation areas. So this isn't our first rodeo. This is actually the second update. The first pass happened in two thousand and eight, and these were kind of more general locations where there should be growth or where there should be protection. In two thousand and thirteen, another update happened where the boundaries were refined, and there's also more components involving civic engagement to make sure that we're hearing what the region priorities are. So what are we doing differently this time? Not really that much. We are really here because ten years have passed since the last update, and we want to be sure to capture all of those changes and make and update boundaries and update the PDAs and PPAs with our community. We hope to introduce a lot more modern civic engagement, though ways for people to interact with this and participate online, such as interactive maps and surveys. And then we also hope to provide a lot more specific recommendations to help each of our communities actually make use of these PDAs and PPAs. So how do our communities make use of these? So the benefits of a PDA include that a PDA designation helps communities coordinate local planning and also win competitive grants. So in this case, North Attleboro, after the PDA designation of their downtown, it helped them acquire funding, technical assistance to update their zoning. Later, through the expedited forty-three D process, they got a one-point-three-million-dollar Mass Works grant to help turn this former jewelry factory site into a development-ready parcel, and the end result is a hundred and ninety-three units located downtown on a parcel that had a lot of remediation shoots. What are the benefits of PPA designations? Likewise, they help our communities coordinate local conservation efforts and win competitive grants. So in the case for Norden, after the PPA, it helped them update their open spacing rec plan, just because a lot of the legwork kind of went in in the beginning through this process. It helped them get a five-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar land grant for conservation acquisitions, and the end result is a hundred and fifty acres of permanently protected land. So in Wareham, there are currently, there are six PDAs, Priority Development Areas, six Priority Protection Areas, and three combined areas. So hold on as I go through a few of the oops. So this is Wareham. As you can see, the kind of purple areas are those Priority Development Areas. This includes a few of the villages like Wareham Village, East Wareham Village, and also it includes more kind of large commercial or industrial sites that could accommodate additional growth. And then PPAs are just a lot of these like large natural areas that are also important to protect. So now Maria is going to talk a little bit about our timeline.
Thank you. So we're looking at about a two-year scope of this process. Right now, we're meeting, we've met with a good, like, I'll say maybe over a third of all of our, our communities to kind of, again, just like we're doing right now, introduce the part, the project to the local, local governing bodies so that at least there are no surprises down the line, because we know more often than not communities come to us with plans that we want to, I know we're coming to you all with plans, and we just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So that's kind of what we're doing right now, since March to May, probably going a little bit into June. But thankfully, in June, we're going to start doing these technical workshops with the town planners, with conservation commissions and other people who kind of have more knowledgeable technical data. This will look like maybe a half day at Town Hall, where we revisit old PDAs and PPAs and really go through the list and see what we want to protect, where we want to develop, and other places that might be combined areas, because the last time, as Philip mentioned, that we did this was ten years ago. So for that third meeting on this timeline, we'll take what we heard from that second meeting and update the existing PT, PDAs and PPAs and present it to y'all and say like, hey, did we get everything right? And then we'll make our final changes based on that feedback. And then our final process is really, again, ensuring that we have that robust civic engagement and hosting two regional screening meetings with the public to say, to identify the most important regions as well, and to ensure, again, that we got everything right. And again, the most important purpose for taking your time today, and thank you again, is to make sure that you guys are aware of what's happening, and if you have any questions of how this plan works, this plan is funded by the MBTA at everything, so it's at no cost to you guys. This is just very helpful for future planning uses. So again, any help that you think or any other folks we should be talking to, we'd love that insight, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
And we're open to any questions that you have.
Looks like there's no questions.
Actually, I raised my hand.
Okay, go ahead, Tricia.
Hi, and both of you, thank you very much for coming. Obviously, I was not a selectman when this war was done ten years ago. I've not seen any of the previous reports, nor do I have a copy of this presentation, so it would be really helpful for me to see what the previous work was, and also to get a copy of this. We went through the slides quickly, and I did get, you know, a general idea of different areas that you've classified one way or another, and I'd like to understand that more closely and see where it stands now so that I can think about what I feel along with my board members, other board members, is appropriate in what we do go, going forward.
For sure. We can, for, I have Marie and Cassandra's information. Is she able to forward it to you, or I can, I'm happy to take down your email as well, or you can take down mine.
I would say if it goes to Marie, we should be able to get it directly. Cassandra has gone to work at another place where we are missing her greatly, but Marie is here, and Marie could also provide you with the contact information for all of us, each one of us on this board, if you would like it.
Yeah, I will do.
Thank you.
Maria, I have a question. Is this up on the Serp Ed website as well?
Yes, it's at serped.org/priority-areas. I would put it in the chat, but it doesn't look like I have access to it. But like I mentioned to Tricia, I can send over our, like, cover letter as well as our website link and this presentation to you all.
Yeah, because the website has a lot more information as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Philip. Philip just put the website in, and that has a lot of the background information.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, yeah, just, just quickly. So I'm just, you know, kind of brief through this little presentation and just kind of, so you had, you had pointed out some Priority Development Areas. And so one area in particular that kind of caught my eye, because it's been kind of in, in the public eye here recently with some zoning changes that have happened, was the Wareham Village. So you, you say that you, you're going out to these communities to kind of just talk about, like, some plans that you might have or things that you might do. So when you talk about projects and stuff like that, and you say you don't just want to show up to start doing work, what kind of, what, what kind of things would we see happen in some of these Priority Development Areas that would, you know, be beneficial to the town?
Yeah, so I do want to reiterate, this is a regional land use plan, so there's no kind of direct regulatory change that will happen because of it. There's no direct kind of investment plan that comes out of it. Instead, it's very, very long-term and kind of high-level thinking, and a kind of a way to coordinate between different communities. So, you know, the example of the rezoning is really good. It's kind of like this regional plan can kind of elevate some of that local work and say, hey, this area has been recently rezoned as an area that could accommodate a bit of additional growth and also kind of make it a wonderful place and also be climate resilient, given kind of its location. So I hope, did that answer?
Yeah, so, so this is more of a, just, just because obviously I wasn't, you know, I, I've only been on the board for a year, so kind of following some of these things, we're kind of learning as we go and seeing things every day, and I just kind of wanted to have a, so it just seems like it's a, it's more of a, I don't want, I don't want to call it like a, I mean, I guess you're some type of a, a plan to, to, to identify areas, you know, not just locally, but within the communities that your specific division of Serp Ed covers, I guess, maybe?
Yeah, you know, it's a way to coordinate between the twenty-seven communities. I will say it's up to each community how they kind of proceed with kind of the results of this plan. As you can see, in North Attleboro, that was just one case study and one example that it really, really helped them when they went to apply for state grants. And in the end result is that they kind of are starting to develop their downtown into the place that they wanted to see through their master plan, through all the other planning work that came through this PDA, PPA process.
Okay. No, I, I think that answers, that, that answers enough for now. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I think just as a background, this also helps Mr. Buckland, Director of Planning and Economic Development, because it gives him a base when he goes out for different grants, which we're actually going to be talking about more of the last items tonight. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you both very much, and I'll probably see you in a Serp Ed meeting sooner than later.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Just a quick comment. We've had reorganization in our office as well, and basically, we had two agendas came out, so it's a little confusing for the members. And I basically went in this morning and made sure which one we actually had paperwork for. So again, it's just teething problems that we'll get through as we go along. Also, just as a quick note, we will not be reorganizing or reconstituting the board, as Mrs. Whiteside is not here and want to have all five members present. Mr. Sullivan, could you unmute yourself for a minute? I have a question. Bob Scanlon, is he part of GHD? I always forget.
No, he's the sewer commissioner, newly elected sewer commissioner.
Oh, that one. Okay. No problem. I've seen you moment again, I guess. Next one up that we're going to have will be Tricia, the Damon's pantry, to use the town seal. You're muted, Tricia.
We have a hand up from Mr. Bowen. So I don't know if his point is before this.
Okay, Richard, why don't you? Mr. Bowen, why don't you come on right now? You're muted.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
We're having, we're having a problem with your audio, your video. Cannot hear you, Rich. Stop laughing at him, Derek.
Sounds like he's falling down a cliff.
That was a good one. I just let him.
I think he may have two devices on at the same time for the meeting, which causes, could cause a problem like that.
You said raise your hand. I heard that.
I have no idea what he said at all. Sorry.
It would be interesting if after all that, he said, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to raise my hand.
We can play a telephone game and say that's what he said.
Yeah, we could. We're having a fun meeting. Well, I see his.
No.
They were close. All right, well, the question I had, maybe Derek can answer. Can we actually authorize a, a nonprofit which really is not, but is not part of the town to use the town seal on their probably paperwork, you know, for contributions, whatever else?
They, I think they're not saying, I think they're listing us as one of the, the places that supported them enjoying our town seal. That, that was my understanding. But the, let me see if I can pull it up real quick.
Yeah, I didn't have any paperwork on this. That's why I'm asking.
I mean, I think it would make sense if they were using it in distribution of, of paraphernalia paperwork to let them know that. I mean, I think it would make sense if they were using it in distribution of of paraphernalia paperwork to let them know that, you know, we do support them and they're printing, just like if I, if they were gonna go to, if I was gonna use another business, I'd have to get permission to use their information to print just to show that to support. That's what, that's what I get out of, out of it, but maybe it's it's wrong.
I think we've already, we've already agreed to uh, you know, support their project earlier.
With another um committee, uh we we were talking about using our um she our our shield as um eh as we have citizens who often say we don't know what the town is doing for us. So to use that for the different committees, et cetera. Um, if we use it for Damian's pantry, I I think as long as we say supported by the town or um an approved um com- company within the town, I think it would, you know, would have to ask Mr. Bowen, but I think that might be okay. But one of the things I would be con- concerned about is what is actually a town entity? And then what is this? What is is an entity that we approve that they're working in the town?
Uh, Mr. Bowen's back up again. It looks like it might be normal. Rich, can you speak to us?
Uh, I'm what was, what was the question, Helen?
Uh, the question I had was uh they want to use our town seal, you know, obviously it's not a uh Wareham entity or, you know, directly related to the town government. And I just want to make sure we're not doing something that creates a problem for our setting up president.
Right. Well, it's a good question. All the law says on the subject is that uh you can't use a town seal without the permission of the town. It, it doesn't speak to the question of who you could give permission to.
Okay.
So if you wanted to give permission, you can do it.
Thank you. Tricia, why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, so just so everybody understands what they're asking for um. It's for um we'd like to do is add a sign at our new location once the land has been cleared. The sign will say coming soon with Damian's logo and have space to thank our early supporters. And they'd like to add the town as one of the early supporters.
That's all fine.
I think that's comfortable.
Yep. Okay.
I make a motion that we vote to authorize Damian's pantry to use the town seal eh to represent that the town supports their effort within the town itself.
Second.
Thank you. Ron?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. Thank you very much. And let's go back. I see Frank is uh still there. If uh Bob White, if you'll try and let him in again. Okay, Frank, can you unmute yourself again?
Got it.
Okay, are you there, Frank?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Tricia, you want to read the item?
Yeah, I just
Under licenses and permits.
Um, I'd like to make a couple of comments. So when Mr. Evangelista was on the phone on the um meeting, just briefly before, we talked about the event date being a Scribner's error and it should be five twenty seven, which then also means there's a Scribner's error on the rain date, which would then be five twenty eight, twenty twenty three. So from twenty eight to twenty seven and from twenty nine to twenty eight are two changes. Um, I'd like to open this up for any questions or any um other input myself and anyone else has on this.
Why don't we just read what the actual uh application, when it says that it's not, at least we have that.
Okay, so I um make a motion that we open the application for the onset beach patio and grill CEO Reverend Frank Evangelista, one eighty two onset F onset for Oyster Festival to take place on May again, twenty seventh Scribner's era from eleven AM to eleven PM.
Second.
Okay, for a discussion. Frank, you want to explain first exactly what's happening, where in the property you're doing this, et cetera?
Yes, I'm actually sitting outside right where it is. It's out on the patio here. Um, the whole patio is going to be used for the Oyster Fest that we're going to be throwing here. It's more of a um kind of kickoff to our summer season that we're going to be letting everybody know that we're going to be doing for the, for the rest of it, but for that specific day, which is the twenty seventh with the rain date of the twenty eighth. We're gonna have all you can eat oysters from eleven to uh four PM and live entertainment that day, uh single person playing a guitar for like an acoustic type event. And then in that afternoon, we'll have the same people who joined the Oyster Fest. They are allowed to come back to come to the restaurant and have, there's going to be a like a DJ that night.
Okay. Board members, anyone have any questions from Mr. Evangelista?
Yeah.
Tricia had her hand up first, sorry.
Um, I just have a a couple of quick um things, Mr. Evangelista, on your um application. In the area that says attestation, I certify under penalties of perjury that I, et cetera, et cetera. And it's your FEIN number is supposed to be in here and there is no number there. And it says method of verification FEIN. So that's kind of off base. And then on the last page, it looks like everything's filled in except for permit fee and for some reason, the status reads inactive. So I'm not sure about those two pieces of information on this application.
Well, is it the fee that I last year? Is that why? Because I paid for this last year and you guys put it on hold? It never gave me the license the whole year, so I don't know if that's why, because I paid for it in full last year.
Well, this particular case, this is a one day license, so.
Ah, so this is different than I, I don't know why it's like that. I have no idea.
Well, what you filed for was a one day for the twenty seventh.
Oh, okay, I understand. So that other one that we're talking about is in, it's still in pending?
Uh, we'd have to look at that and see. I have no idea to give you an answer right now.
Okay.
And uh, I think, Ron, you had a question for?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. We'll stop. So on the, on the last uh the last page of the application here, uh have we uh have we gotten sign off uh from EMS Fire Harbor Master? Um, because as of when this was uploaded, there's still nothing there. So had, do we know if that's been signed off by those departments yet?
Uh, that would be on the paperwork. Uh, Tricia, you want to go through the paperwork that you have?
Yeah, this is kind of interesting and Mr. Evangelista, I apologize to you. This is a new form we have. And um as it goes down, it, the form, it talks about the various areas that need to sign off. And according to this, Marie Garrity has assigned approval step and added approval step, added approval step. I don't know if that means that she already has the signatures or simply that we have to have them. And this is a form I've never seen before.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other thing, go ahead, Ron.
So the the other, the other question that I have, and I think it's the, it's the, it's the million dollar question. Um, is how do you plan on controlling the crowd? Because you're only available to have up to ninety nine people in the restaurant um at any given time based on fire code. Um, so how do you plan on controlling that and making sure that the number stays down?
Well, we only sold a certain amount of tickets to make sure we wouldn't go above that. This is a private outdoor event, so only the attendees can come to that event.
So how many tickets were, how many tickets were sold for the event?
Uh, fifty one.
Okay. So, so the out, so, but but here's my what I want to be closely thinking of is I understand that you so only sold fifty one tickets for the event. But you still have general business that you'll be conducting that day, right? You're not closing the business just for the specific event, right?
Yeah, correct. Usually on average, we get between ten and eighteen people that come in and out of the restaurant for pickups, drop offs, deliveries, things of that nature.
But this is gonna be, but this is gonna be a busy weekend.
It should be, but nobody can get into the patio without a ticket. That's, it's a private event. That's why we did it that way, so we can stay below that ninety nine people.
Okay, so but you're gonna have somebody that's controlling the out, the pick the patio out of.
Yes, correct. They have to check into the event at the gate, at the front of the patio here. And in order to get their wristband to get in and out of the event, they have to check in and also to get their voucher. So that's the only way to get in and out of of the event. And we'll have somebody up there with the list, almost like um kept track of it by email, so they have to check in with their email. That we also have uh sent them a printed ticket, which they need to get into the event without a wristband. They can't get in.
Okay.
Any other questions, Ron?
No, those are the, those are the things that kind of popped out of me.
Jared, you're next.
Thank you. Um, just real quick, I'm reading uh one of your flyers here. Um, just tickets are limited to a hundred. I know Ron already tapped on this, but uh limited to a hundred, so order ASAP. You have a capacity of ninety nine. Um, with that ninety nine, that also includes your employees and yourself and anyone else that's on the property at that time. Uh, so you might want to send that back out if you plan on having more people buy tickets. Um, just that way, so you don't go over it. That's uh, that's my only thing. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Jared. That was uh one of the points I was gonna make. Uh, I think people forget one of his capacities, everybody in the building, whether it's an employee or a customer. Uh, so it makes it a little more difficult to take care of. Uh, there'd be nobody out on the beach on the for this event.
No, it's only, no, the event's only on the patio. There's um nothing going on on the beach that weekend.
Okay. And uh on the legal license part of this whole thing, uh do you have a current insurance policy binder that's you know, that's up to date and current, because we did get some information about an insurance policy that may have lost?
Nope, everything is up to date.
Okay, I've got to ask as a condition that we have the most current insurance policy binder showing us in place. That's the only thing. Any other questions for anybody?
Yeah, I think I just um suggest that Mr. Evangelista get in touch with Ms. Garrity um tomorrow. When I look down this list, some of them say um she added an approval step and some say, for example, Dave Menard approved to the approval step. So I think there's a number of these steps that may not have been signed off on yet. And I know you want to have a good um event, so we really need to make sure everything's t's are crossed, i's are dotted.
All we can do is, Tricia, if you want, in your motion, is to include to make sure that everything is signed off as required by the town and also that we have the most current insurance policy with a binder to the town in place, certified that it's in place as of to the, as of the date.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the application of onset beach patio and grill CO Rev Frank Evangelista for their Oyster Festival to take place on May twenty seventh from eleven AM to eleven PM on the conditions that all approvals have been made and that the current um insurance policy is active.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Jared?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Okay, thank you, Frank.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you.
We'll have the paperwork ready as soon as you bring in what you need, plus the uh current number for the FIN number as well.
You got it. I'm gonna send the email over right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
You too.
Shit, uh, Mr. Slaven, so we're not doing the other license tonight?
No, I went when I was upstairs this morning and stuff, I went through the paperwork and it was not the only one that we had for license was with Angelista. I could be wrong, but I thought we had approved uh everything to do with the Oyster Festival on the twenty eighth.
I thought, I thought we had two.
Yeah.
And what, when we look at the calendar, um you know, if, I don't know if we're scheduled to meet next um Tuesday on the twenty third, but if we're not, um this happens before there'd be another meeting.
Yeah, but what I would suggest we do, because there was no paperwork there, so we're be making a motion to do something without any background paperwork, you know, silence, and I'm pretty sure you've already done this. Uh, we'll just have to call as best we can a uh a selectmen's meeting, you know, before Thursday of next week, if it has to be a problem. As long as we get three of us there, it's got gonna be an issue. But I don't want to go ahead and do something without, if we have to, without proper paperwork. I'm pretty sure we've done this already. And it's not, and none of us have anything on our packet far.
No.
Except, except for two attendants. Okay, uh, next we have item H, which the correct one is, has to do with the curbside billing. If you want to go ahead with that one, Tricia.
Yeah, I I make a motion um to open discussion and ta- possibly take the vote to approve the opt out and reduction fees, application for curbside building, billing FY twenty three, the, in the amount of ten thousand ninety five dollars.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Okay, Jared?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Alan, yes, four zero zero. Okay, try and make sure we don't miss anything.
We need to go back to the proclamation for Pride Month.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Tricia.
Okay, um I'm gonna read our proclamation for Pride Month.
Excuse me, I mean Jared had his hand up.
I was under the impression I was reading that.
You can.
Go ahead and do it then.
Absolutely.
All right, sorry about that. Proclaim, uh proclamation Pride Month. Um, whereas Martin Luther King Junior wrote, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. And it is only right and moral that we identify, condemn, and stand against all forms of racism, discrimination, and hatred. And whereas the month of June was chosen to commemorate the riots that took place in Manhattan in June of nineteen sixty nine at the Stonewall Inn." Apologies. Uh, whereas the United States Supreme Court ruled in June two thousand fifteen that same sex couples can marry nationwide as a civil right. Whereas gay, lesbian, and bisexual Americans can serve their country openly, honestly, without fear of losing their jobs because of whom they love. Whereas the town of Wareham recognizes that our nation was founded upon the principles that all people are created equal and that each person has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas the town of Wareham understands that LGBT rights are are human rights and whereas the town of Wareham is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of all of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of this town. Therefore, the town of Wareham proclaims that June of twenty twenty three shall be known as Pride Month. So proclaimed this sixteenth day of May twenty twenty three, signed the Select Board.
Thank you.
Apologies, the kids were yelling in the backyard.
Hey, as long as they having fun, Jared, it's all good. Okay, next up, Tricia will be uh the discussion of possible vote to provide letters of support. That will be Mr. Buckland, Bob, let Mr. Buckland in, please. My, my agenda looks like a checkerboard.
Hi, Ken. Good evening. How are you doing?
You're on.
Thank you. We got three grant applications for the one stop for the growth, the Massachusetts program, state program that uh coordinates a series of uh grant applications, grant programs uh for our communities. And the three I have that uh we're looking at, the first one is for a uh, a, a for a, uh, a, a a study of the Merchant's Way, uh, feasibility study for the options of constructing a fishing pier, kayak launch, and coastal pathway on the shorefront side of the tracks. Reason we're doing this is because Mass DOT has offered to install a pedestrian, uh, grade level crossing of railroad tracks uh, if we participate in a significant way. And what we want to do is make sure that there's some value in actually bringing some activities and, uh, getting some structures on the waterfront side of the, of the tracks.
Anybody have any questions for that particular grant application? Okay. Go ahead to number two, Ken.
The second one is for, uh, to hire an urban planner, an urban designer to, uh, present a concept for redevelopment uh, together with zoning bylaws that would implement the vision for that section of Route 28, which has undergone a major transformation in the, uh, Mass DOT reconstruction project for the divided highway. We're looking at, uh, at significant, uh, investment in that area to take advantage of the safety that's, uh, afforded by the new divided highway. And, uh, this naming mixed use development. And, uh, we're, we would need to have a, a vision that everybody can, uh, understand and agree on. And then have the zoning that, uh, implements it. And that's the, uh, looking just at that 1.6 mile stretch of the road, which is under construction at this time.
Tricia, go ahead.
Just, Ken, um, I want to, I just need to verify the west side of that zone and the east side of that zone. So, um, I kind of know where the road's being worked on. But what are our border limitations on what we're looking at?
Uh, it would be the, uh, Depot Avenue and Red Brook Road is approximately the, the endpoints. And it's the railroad tracks on the south side and the boundary line of the commercial zoning, the commercial strip zoning on the north.
Any other questions, Ken? Uh, just as background information, uh, the, uh, basically MBTA had required, you know, housing, which was through DHCD. And, uh, and Ken confirmed the, but we were basically were able to meet the requirements. So we can go to the one stop shop, you know, Mass Works, et cetera, to apply for these grants. Uh, if we hadn't basically filed and, you know, submitted and got approved, we, we would not be able to file for any of these, unfortunately. Because that's the way this program works. Either you comply or you're out. Correct, Mr. Buckland?
That's correct. And we're still under the gun on that, uh, program, though. They're still looking for housing from us.
Yes, they are, but they're letting us move forward anyways, which is a good thing. Uh.
The, the third, the third grant application is, is something that had been before, the selectment previously on the entrance to the Kendrick Road Industrial Park. Uh, right now, that it needs some safety improvements. It needs, uh, defined lanes, modified geometry, improved drainage, and signage to make the entrance safer and more visible. Uh, it's, uh, we have a lot more customer oriented businesses down in the industrial park now. And, uh, they, they need to get better access in there when you have tractor trailers coming out and passenger cars, uh, traveling through that area as well, too.
Any questions for the board? Jared, then Trish.
Not so much a question, but this is a, a very important one, uh, near and dear to me because, um, they've been asking for signs for, all those businesses have been asking for signs for, God, almost eight years now, if not longer. And, uh, you know, that, that's, that's, well, those are the businesses that help out the little programs in town. So, um, I think the faster we can move on that one is, I'd be happier with more than anything else. Hate to say it, but thank you very much, uh, Mr. Buckland, for all your help with that one.
And Mr. Buckland, I just want to go back, um, to item two for a moment. And, um, when they're looking at mixed use in that zone, wouldn't that development that's down on Red Brook Road contribute significantly to the concept of mixed use there?
It sure would, but part of the problem with that is it doesn't have much, uh, service and, uh, 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 recreational, uh, social, uh, uh, access at the, at that location right now. It's sort of isolated. And, uh, you're putting a lot of people in an area with, uh, without the pedestrian connections and, uh, uh, the services that, uh, support, uh, the kind of quality of living that you want in that, in that area.
So if I make an assumption, which is a terrible word, um, some of the types of projects that might fall then in that area is, ways people can access, um, the various stores across the street, et cetera, et cetera.
That's right. Maybe we put some stores on that side of the street as well, too.
Yeah. Great. Right. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Ken on that? Okay, just, uh, on the last one, just so the public understands, uh, the original highway that was there, whether they basically put in Route 28, it was a road to the right if you're heading up toward, uh, Walmart and stuff, which is like at a slight angle, and there's huge boulders and a triangle that break off and there's a road, there are a lot of vehicles parked. And that road goes down past and it goes down basically with the, uh, rehab places, et cetera. And there's been an issue there. Basically, that road was given to the town, as is that triangle piece of land there. And we've talked for quite a while about putting a sign right in that triangle to help all the businesses there and stuff. So it's going to be a difficult, uh, I'm not sure what the best word to use. It's just going to be a difficult fix dealing with the people who have kind of, uh, inherited it, is the best way to put it this time. So we're going to have to have a bunch of support from the different departments of the town to get this done as well. We'll put Ken out front, but I have a ballistic vest for you.
Sounds good. I'll put the civil engineers and the landscape architects out in front, too. That's what we hired the consultants for.
Yeah, so just everybody understands that, that triangle area that's been there a long time. We're trying to get that taken care of as well. Thank you very much, Ken. Appreciate your hard work you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think next will be the town administrator's report.
Well, do we want to vote to support this or just?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we can go ahead. We, we definitely should support this. So go ahead.
And I, I'm going to make the assumption that we're going to make one motion for all three. But if people feel differently, then we can subdivide this. So I make a motion that we vote to provide letters of support for state one stop for grant, growth grant applications for conceptual design for a fishing pier kayak coastal pathway off of Merchant's Way for place making and zoning for mixed use on the Cranberry Highway corridor in East Wareham and for the Kendrick Road Industrial Park entrance improvements.
Second.
Any other questions? None heard. Jared?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Alan, yes, four zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it. Derek, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will keep it brief. Uh, you know, there's been a lot going on, but, uh, not much to report. I do, I'll let you know, we did receive the, uh, annual gift from, uh, Clear Channel to the, to TA gift account, $10,000. And just want, uh, we, so we have to accept that. So you can even, if you're okay with it, we can just say okay with it.
So moved.
Just got a second.
Second.
Okay, Jared?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Alan, yes, four zero zero there.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'll spare you.
I appreciate that. Okay, uh, any leads on our initiative reports for any of the board members? Ron?
No. Not tonight.
None.
Tricia?
No, not tonight.
And guess what? Alan says no also. How about that? Um, as I said, we will be reorganizing the board. We're going to meet next, which will be May 30th. We are not meeting next week unless something comes up that becomes a, a necessity. So with that, I guess, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, good. You got me head of attack.
You're not allowed to do that.
Yeah.
Oh, wait. Oh, I guess he can be you today. You both kind of.
I'm being out tonight.
I, I'd like, I'd like to.
He has less air than I have.
We're in a lot of trouble.
I'd like to stop this for a second. I, I think we should make a motion to have a meeting next week because we have the Oyster Festival, the application for the festival, um, that we don't have approved.
I don't think we should make a meeting unless we can do that last.
That would have to be up to the chair anyway.
Yeah.
She has to make that.
I've already made a comment that if for some reason the Oyster Festival license has not been approved, which we think it has, but it's not on the actual agenda. We'll meet sometime next week. At least three of us will take care of it at that time.
Sounds good.
Appreciate the thought. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the undiscussable.
Second.
Yep, Tricia?
Yes.
Ron?
Uh, uh, I, I would say be like Jared, but I don't want to be like him. So yes.
Okay, Jared?
He's not good looking enough to be like me. Yes.
And to make Jared feel good, I'll say no. Three, one, zero. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate you putting up with us tonight because like I said, this is a first meeting with a short staff, you know, in the office. And I appreciate anybody, everybody going to the selectmen's office, please give, uh, Maria a little slack because she's doing the best she can. With that, good night, everybody.
Good night, Wareham.